Don't anticipate hitting every single page, but hopefully you'll get a good idea of the information in front of you. So before we jump into the actual report, we kind of felt like it was important to maybe touch on online sales. It's kind of, it's a common question that comes up as you start talking about sales tax. So wanted to put out some, some different facts behind it. By state law merchants must collect and report the state's sales tax if they're conducting business within the state of Texas. And then local taxes if it's within our jurisdiction. This applies to those physically present merchants as well as the online merchants. It's the merchant's responsibility to report it correctly. That's a pretty important note here. There's really no way for the city itself to police those merchants out there. Merchants that don't report sales tax or really even fail to collect sales tax could apply to both of those. Both the storefront vendors and online merchants. So this isn't really specific to just online sales. And the final point here is that merchants report their sales data. Again, we talked about they're reporting usually, I think by the 20th of each month to the state. They're reporting pure sales. There's no identifier from the merchant telling the state whether they're a physical merchant or an online merchant. So another common question is, are you able to decipher the, you know, kind of the breakdown of the economy? Well, we do have a little bit and we'll kind of expand on that a little bit, but there's not anything that we're, the merchants are reporting to the state today. So kind of, you know, segueing into how have we been traditionally reporting and doing some sort of trend analysis? So you've seen kind of a couple of different, a couple of different reports that we've shown. This is the, kind of the monthly information that we put out. Once we know what the total month payment is going to be from the state. What you have in front of you is the city's general fund. We've got six years of historical data compared to our current year budget versus actuals. One of the things we've included here, at least for the remainder, and this is quite small, I apologize. It's basically the estimates or the projections for the remaining years, remaining months, excuse me, in red. So kind of, you know, puts out what, what we're at least expecting for each month for the city's general fund and as well on the sales tax side. So again, another report and Gilbert will be bringing this back next week as far as the work session. This is a 20-year historical recap of the sales tax. And you can see kind of some of the trend analysis that you're able to, you know, see is it's, it's nice when it's kind of gradually peaking up. But then you get into this roller coaster ride that's been sales taxes of late. So those are really two of the, you know, common reports that we've looked at. And those are again, they're based on historical data. And it's really at just that monthly total amount. We've, we've never really been able to on a month-to-month basis, really dive into the composition of that monthly amount. Any type of booms and recessions are really going to skew that data and any of the trends that we're trying to analyze from that data. So really again, we didn't, we need to be able to determine some sort of baseline and really dissect that monthly amount that we receive. And really the best way to do that is to break it into categories. And we had, if you remember, it was back in 2014, we had actually compiled a comprehensive report. Kind of using some of the state's available data and got it into a kind of a category analysis. But really due to the, the time it took to manipulate the data and it just really wasn't manageable to produce monthly. So when we were presented with an opportunity to use a company called citybase.net. It's Mr. Lewis McLean out of the Dallas-Fort Worth area. We went into an agreement with him and essentially sales tax paid for the initial year it was funded in 2017. And part of that agreement is really driven from the state's confidentiality reports. And if you've ever seen the actual confidentiality reports on a month-to-month basis, these are very intense. Basically shows all merchants that are operating within our jurisdiction and all of the filings that they have for that particular month. It'll have the monthly returns as well as any audit adjustments. And these audit adjustments will be key and we'll point out a couple of these and how it can really skew our data. And it's by tax ID. So on average, we're looking at about 3,500 records each month that's in a confidentiality report from the state. And the reason you may think, well, 3,500, there can't be that many merchants here locally. For the most part and probably really part of the, the comprehensive piece to this agreement with Mr. McLean is the data scrubbing. So what he'll do is actually do some data scrubbing to, to basically group like merchants together. So put a couple of examples here, McDonald's or even Walmart. I looked at the most recent month and Walmart had three listings. And it's again by tax ID. So I have to assume based on the sales, one of them is probably their physical store. The other one may be some sort of online and I don't, can't really come up why they have a third unless they have online split between the two locations here. So again, the confidentiality reports will have every single report by tax ID. And then he's able to kind of scrub that data and combine those into kind of, he calls it a pair name cleaned up. So we'll have all McDonald's together or all Walmart. So that's kind of the first step of his monthly routine that he runs through. The second part is then taking all of that data and putting it in or dividing it out into 12 market categories. And we essentially dictated which 12 market categories we wanted to use. And it's really driven by each individual merchant's NAICS code. That's the North American Industry Classification System. And it basically says, I'm a, you know, some sort of restaurant service or, you know, there's a, there's, I wouldn't even be willing to guess how many different NAICS codes there are. But essentially we came up with 12 and I'm not going to read through them all here because you'll see them repeated as we go through the actual report. But we feel like this gives a good composition of the Victoria economy. So you can see, you know, some big ones, we've got oil and gas, we've got the retail trade, et cetera. So we feel like this is kind of the first step and really starting to break down our monthly receipts and kind of taking it from the 100,000 foot level down. You know, maybe into the, we've, we've gone down an entire level, which will be very beneficial from a projection standpoint. And just really understanding why the numbers are what they are. Oh, thought I heard him. So question was posed and, and we thought this would be kind of a good segue into the actual report itself. So okay, oil and gas is down and has been for some time, right? Well, that could be true and, and you may think, well, yeah, oil and gas has been down for two years. And when we say oil and gas, that's the true, you know, oil drilling extraction. But it's also all the other industries here locally that feed off of the oil and gas. So the service companies that, that go up and down with the oil and gas sector. So to really answer that question, I'm going to pause and not really give an answer just yet. But I'm going to actually jump into the actual report itself, hopefully. And again, this is online and before we finish up, I'll show you where we have this report and then we'll keep a kind of an archive of the previous reports. So here I have what we're calling our June report. So again, this concludes our last, very most recent receipt from the state. And hopefully this, the way this is set up is very easy to maneuver. We have bookmarks down the left-hand side and I'm going to expand this a bit so that you can really see the information in front of you. And I learned earlier not to use the bookmarks because it compresses the pages as you go from one page to the next. So basically, you know, what's in the report? And again, we're not going to go through all the information, but you know, every report has to have an introduction. I'm not going to read through the data itself, but really what we start out with here is the actual categories, again, those 12. We've identified the category, we've given some of those general NAICS codes or categories that fall within that. And then we felt like it was important to then know, okay, here's a particular merchant and names that you would actually recognize. So I tried not to pick some of the, you know, if it was XYZ company that reported 50 cents this month, that's probably not all that relevant. So we tried to pick some of the larger reporting merchants to give clear identification of who falls in what category. So I'll just start with the first one, arts, amusements and sports. That's essentially Cinemark, the different country clubs and gyms. We felt like this was an important category to keep separate just because of maybe some of the motel tax piece of it. And to show that that's a separate driver within the economy. Again, construction, finance, insurance and leasing. So again, here's the 12 categories and we'll probably refer to them quite often as we go through here. Next section is executive summary. And essentially here, what this says unfortunately, that all of the previous revenue growth we had experienced through the Eagle Ford shale boom is essentially being erased with the decline that we're seeing as of late. So I think it was a little over $4 million increase over the years and it's now being kind of eaten away with the decline here. So we talk about it both from the city's general fund as well as the sales tax development corporation. It's important to note that this report is really for the city as a whole. So there's both the general fund component and the sales tax development corporation. And if there's any differences, we try to at least address them independently. Moving through the next, basically this is almost a table of contents for the next set or the, kind of the first set of reports that you're going to see. And I'm not going to read the information on here. I really want to focus more on the actual reports itself. This is something you've basically historically seen. So this is a monthly recap of the actual receipt that we got from the state. That's our total payment. So for this month, again, this is our May that we just received this month in June, 1.565 is our total payment. And we show out to the right, we have current year versus last year, both in a dollar and percentage variance and then current year versus two years ago. So you can see there's a lot of red. Again, this year compared to last isn't as bad as this year compared to two years ago. But you know, we, we've seen this information. You have the individual monthly variances as well as kind of that cumulative amount that we're tracking for the year. Okay? The bottom of the page is really going to be the first chart. And essentially everything you see here is going to have a table format with a chart, just probably nothing else. Some might, may want to just look at the chart itself and not really look at the numbers. But this is the first piece of data where the categories themselves are interjected. So down the left-hand side, we have the 12 categories in alphabetical order. Do we have fiscal year 15, 16 to 17? Important note here, this is October through May of all three years. So it's October to date at the same point in the last three years. So you can see, and I'm going to pick retail trade. The nice thing is that basically by looking at the percentage, you can quickly see on average retail trade makes up about 45% of our local economy over the three years. This year we're approaching almost 49%. So it's nice to see that retail is consistent and not jumping up and down tremendously from one year to the next. And really for the current year, the second category or the second largest category is our restaurant and food services category. That's an additional 10.75%. So those two categories together is right at 60% of our local economy in the current year. Well, you can see, again, we pointed out the retail trade, but you can see that oil and gas two years ago was 13.8, jumped up to almost 18%. And now it's back down to five and a half percent. I would think by the time we really get into the oil and gas breakdown and charge, you'll see that I think five and a half percent is probably more normalized. And essentially some of the, the boom is gone and I think five and a half is, is going to be about where it's going to sit. So that kind of first answers, or that's kind of one of the first, I guess, hints at how long the oil and gas has really been depleted. And essentially it's, it's really being felt more recent and we'll, we'll really nail that down here in the next couple of charts. And try to stick to my notes too. So going into the top of the next page here, essentially this is kind of what we just saw, but it's really a little bit more variance detail. So this is really just the current year versus last year. Again, dollar and percentage variances. So you can see, you know, if everything was red, you know, it may not be, I guess, if you can pick out anything that's good here. I can at least say that information, publishing and media, I'm going to maybe for the viewing public.
It is almost all red.
I will take any, we'll take any blacks that we can get.
I understand, I understand.
Positives are good. I'll make this a tad bit larger. Maybe. Okay. So you can see that information, publishing and media, along with utilities and waste management. Again, October through May, current year compared to last is actually in a positive variance. Again, we're looking for any kind of positive signs that we can see when we're looking at sales taxes of late. Conversely, looking at current year to two years ago, it's all red. Oh, one thing I wanted to point out that I didn't, I'm going to, and I hope I don't jump around too much. But I want to point out that even though, here's retail trade. And again, we're talking 7.3 million October to date last year or at 7.1 million current year. So really it's a $241,000 variance, but in percentage terms, it's only 3.3%. So retail trade really isn't tracking that far off of last year's number. Okay? It's weird, I can see my screen over here moving faster than I want it.
Andrew, are those like, or what do we used to call it, same-store sales? Or is that just included any new, like Panda Express is brand new perhaps? Maybe it wasn't in that number the prior year and it's in this number?
That, that, that could be.
It's all just lumped in?
Yes.
And that's, that's okay. That's a good way, it's just it's growth, it's retail growth.
Yes, and there could have been, if say Panda comes on and someone else closed down, we don't, we don't really break out, I guess, showing more of a.
Yeah.
We do look at the data and I think Gilbert's fixing to get up. We look at some of that data to try to figure out more of the projections moving forward. And we'll really get into it as we start looking at some of the actual category information. But yes, that's, that's a fair point.
Well, like the, the second Walmart, when did it open? You know, it might've helped some, but I can't remember how long it's been there now.
I mean, two years.
Two years.
Probably close to two.
So.
Yeah, you might argue that some of that just dispersed.
Cannibalizes, yeah.
Yeah, instead of it 100% going to the, to one location, it's maybe split. So, okay, so that's, you know, really getting into some, we feel some very, you know, good data. Again, the next three charts, we just basically show the same information that you've seen historically. So we have the general fund information just as we post, as soon as we get the receipt from the, from the state. We have the sales tax information, again, nothing really new there. We also throw in now a combined, again, since the report itself talks about the city as a whole. We've just got the, the combination of the total receipts. Okay? Now kind of moving into the next section of reports, this is, to me, this is really where the, the meat of the report lies. I think, you know, we, we like all of the report obviously. But now we'll start actually getting into how are the individual categories doing exclusive of, of themselves? So again, we've, what we have here, starting in largest category first, so remember we saw retail trade was almost 45, 48%. So we're going to have it ranked in greatest to smallest category. So we say retail trade and we're going to give dollar and percentage variances comparing this year to last and then this year to two years ago. And then the final piece on each one of these is going to be kind of a, how is that actual category? What is the status of it? And we've got really four categories that we came up with and there's several caveats to the, to the categories. But we've got recovered, improving, improving slowly or not improving. So we have to look at each individual category and can't just say, oh, well, it's red, it's not improving. That, then everything would be not improving. You've seen a lot of red so far. We have to look at each one particular and say, okay, we, I think we can all probably agree, we're probably not going to get back to the, to the Eagle Ford shale boom numbers. But how is it doing this year compared to last? And how's it doing this year compared to two years ago? What does the more recent data look like? So we're coming up with some, you know, status indicators and we could probably sit here and, and say, well, no, that, that's not improving, that's improving slowly. But just to kind of give you a general idea of how each individual category is doing. And before I forget, I want to point out, if you'll notice here, retail trade, restaurants, information, wholesale trade, utilities. These top five categories make up about 80% of the total economy and we're showing they're at least all improving. So again, if we're looking for any kind of silver lining and, and negative numbers, you know, the driving larger categories are at least starting to improve.
Excuse me, what is it that makes you say it's improving?
Okay, so.
Did you draw that distinction?
You have to, you have to really look at the actual charts. So I just kind of wanted to show you what's here. So we'll just jump right in. Here's the retail chart. So again, same information you'd kind of seen, but this is now, if I can get it to center. This is now just retail trade. And you'll notice at the top, some of these are going to be pretty obvious. So we didn't bring back the actual merchant names. But you know, again, retail trade, you can look at current year. So I'm here at current year versus last, we're about 242,000 negative variance. Well, this year compared to two years ago, we were actually 903,000. And we also have a couple of months, in the last three, we've had two positive months. And then the last was actually a negative, but it was 1.2% on a, you know, almost $800,000 expected number. So one would have to say that's, that's, if anything, that has to be improving. It may be improving slowly, but it's at least in the, in the right direction. It could be, thank you Gilbert, it could be more of a normalizing, getting back to what we can expect probably moving forward. Does that kind of, does that answer your question?
And so in your narrative, you've used first the percentage of this year versus last year. And then the next is this year versus two years ago.
Yes.
And if this year versus last year is a less negative number, that's how you're.
The trend is up.
Yeah, basically it's, it's trending in the right direction, I guess is probably a better way. And that may not always be, there's a couple of categories where it could be, and I'll just, I don't, I'd have to look at the actual category. But it could be negative $27,000 variance this compared to two years ago. And it's at $26,000 negative. If it's not moving hardly any, we're not going to say that's improving, it's probably just not improving. So it's kind of holding flat, but at least it's not going the wrong way.
Thank you, I'm getting lost.
Andrew?
Yes, sir.
If I may, I'm sorry. Now this is only the sales tax that we're collecting these numbers here. This is not the actual sales.
Correct.
Okay, so for instance, on 241,684 dollars in sales tax, that represents almost 1 million 993,000 in lesser sales from the prior year. Is that correct?
Yeah, if you're trying to gross back in, go back into gross sales, that would, and not.
Yes.
Have to trust your math there, I don't have it in front of me.
I just wanted to, if I had that right, okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. Yes, this is strictly the actual sales tax that we collect tying back to that monthly sales tax number, which is, you know, obviously pretty critical. Okay, so really, you know, I think if anything, this is now kind of taking a closer look at, at category by category and how they're trending from month to month. And not only just saying, okay, well, you know, looking back, okay, well, retail trades appears to be doing better. But we can also now use this data and say, probably with a little finer, you know, precision here. What do we expect maybe the next four months to do based on some historical data? And then also into 18. So again, we, you know, historically it just kind of looked at the monthly numbers and assumed that, okay, oil and gas is up, everything else is going to be up. Well, that could be true, but you'll see that while it may be true, it may not be true to the samest degree, to the samest, I don't think that's the word. To the same degree in each individual category. Or that could also even play an adverse role and so. So retail trade, you know, the next largest again was our restaurant and food services. You can see, you know, numbers are, you know, they're within reason from month to month. Again, 157 negative compared to two years ago, 106 current year. And again, that's, you know, we, we show it as improving, could be improving slowly, but at least it's in the right direction. You know, we, I thought we were good here last month, we had a 1.7% and then it, you know, dipped down again. But again, I think we can use these numbers and forecast out a little better moving forward. And hopefully then, you know, all of these you'll see will roll into a grand total. Information and publishing, again, that was one of the ones that we saw actual positive variance. And you could see through the first part of the year up until the last two months, we actually had positive variances, you know, for, for six out of the eight. And then, you know, one little downturn and then essentially, you know, I, I look at 1.2% as almost flat. So. And that's one where, you know, at first when I look at that, okay, well, compared to two years ago, we were negative 27,000. And now compared to last year, we're actually positive 27,000, you know, jumping up and down, that was recovered. Well, we still have some negative variances in there, so we don't really want to say it's recovered just yet. Hopefully we can get, you know, further into the, to the positive and we may say that one's actually recovered. Probably going to show one more wholesale trade. You know, it was, this is one, I think this is probably quite obvious. Compared to two years ago, we were almost $427,000 down. Compared to this year, we're $85,000 down, so we have to say that's improving.
Curious, you have motor vehicles in that? And also in retail, you had automotive dealerships, what's the difference?
Yeah, on, we don't, we don't collect sales tax on the sale of vehicles. So it's probably parts stores, I know even, and I can, we can disclose names, we just can't disclose dollar amounts that those names are reporting each month. But like Mack Hike will be listed in there, so there are parts stores, parts counter, any sales that they have is going to have sales tax on it. The, really when you look at, the biggest difference between retail trade and wholesale trade is, so I would say Mack Hike's parts counter is going to fall on the retail side. Wholesale trade is going to be more of maybe like somebody like Fleet Pride that sells, you know, more, you know, to, probably to the, to the larger population. And then I know what's a bigger one and within, on the wholesale trade, let me see, let me go back if.
I'm thinking, you know, like building material, most of that's tax exempt because the person that does the construction charges that interest and.
Yeah, I gotta.
I'm just trying to figure out in that wholesale, if there's really much tax there, what it really is.
Yeah, so we have, you know, wholesale trade is going to be Performance Food Group, Midcoast Electric, Ferguson Plumbing, Service Supply, Service Supply before, actually Service Supply was on here a couple of months ago. And with their relocation, they won't be on this report anymore. So that kind of distinguish, you know, you could almost argue that wholesale trade could get lumped in with retail trade.
Now Andrew, didn't you tell us at one time though, the entity chooses what category?
Yes, ma'am. And again, it's, it's driven, and that's a good point, I don't think I've made that yet. It's driven based on the merchant selection of the NAICS code. I know the, the few of you that are on the sales tax board, y'all saw the, I think the very first rendition of this report. If you go back and look at that, there's going to be some huge changes in some of the numbers. We've done a lot of data scrubbing to ensure that everyone is in the right category as we see it. And a, one particular company, I'm trying to make sure that I don't say anything out of line here. But it was a company that had probably pulled their permit based on one particular line of business that they were in. And that's morphed, I think it was actually like two down the line. And what they're reporting in today, that correlation made no sense at all. And it was actually pulled, it fell in like arts and museums, but now, I mean, amusements, basically it was a gym. And now it's in retail trading because it's a liquor store. So they, again, it's based on what they pull and the code they choose. Well, if their business changes, they probably don't cancel their permit and get a new one. It just goes with, oop, sorry, goes with them as they start in a new endeavor. So is that, does that, someone answer your question? So I'm going to jump back to, what I wanted to get to was really that oil and gas to kind of answer that question that was posed earlier is really when did? And this is one where you can really see, and I guess it's nice to see that, you know, utilities, while I'm on here, you know, it's, it appears to be improving. Especially as we, you know, this is one that's very seasonal as we move into the summer months. You know, this is your, your electrical, your natural gas folks. As we hit the summer season, we would hope that they would, you know, at least meet if not exceed prior year and even two years ago. So kind of answer that looming question from earlier, when did oil and gas really drop off? So as you look at, you know, fiscal year 15, 3.6 million dollar total collections, we were averaging, you know, probably $300,000 or $400,000 a month. That rolls right into the first part of 2016 and all of a sudden, boom, May of last year. So literally this time a, a year ago, we experienced a huge reduction in what we consider oil and gas category of receipts. Now, you know, that's, we're now anywhere from 30, 40,000 up to, you know, we've gone up to, you know, we have to assume that's a, that's a pure number. And this is really where this particular sector or this category is very consistent with audit adjustments. So you may look at that. So you may look at that like, well, how in the world do you have a negative return for that category for the month? And I wasn't going to try to remember these numbers off the top of my head, but for November, so almost a hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollar audit adjustment from one particular taxpayer, and it actually covered a little over three years. So what, what have, what we've really seen by having the data available to us is this sector predominantly will early pay when times are good, they'll late pay when times aren't good, and then they're really getting hit with some pretty sizable audit adjustments. The state, I, I don't know what their threshold is, but they will, if there's a very, very large adjustment that's going to affect us, they'll contact us and say, we're willing to kind of enter into a payback agreement over the same course that the error was filed. In these two particular months, that November was a hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollar adjustment, and they didn't give us the option of, of doing it over that three-year payback. And then the May number, the, the very recent ten thousand was actually almost seventy-three thousand dollars in current collections, but it was offset by an eighty-three thousand dollar audit adjustment, and that one actually covered it was forty-nine months, so four years and a month worth of an audit adjustment where they took it away in one shot. This, I, I can almost, I didn't run the numbers, but I can almost bet that ninety percent of our audit adjustments that are large fall in this oil and gas category. Now, what we're able to do to help hopefully with projections moving forward is we can pull out those audit adjustments and say, okay, here's our more current collections for each individual month, and that's what we're probably going to expect more moving forward. So if anything, having that data available to us is, is very helpful to kind of determine what is more of a, of a, a normal expectation. So I think that kind of answers, hopefully answers the, you know, when did the oil and gas boom, boom out, I guess, is basically a year ago. And again, yes, there is a timing effect that will fill it, and I think, you know, very similar to the, you know, to the recession, it, it took a little bit for it to really impact us. But if anything, you can see, you know, there's some positive numbers, at least, you know, some larger numbers if nothing else, maybe not as large, but again, I, I would actually be pretty astonished if we're going to see these same levels really anytime soon.
You know that, that May, June, and July for fiscal year twenty fifteen and twenty sixteen, where those numbers started going lower, those weren't because of any audit adjustments that brought that down? When you see that number, how would you know?
We, we would have to, and, and part of the agreement is we get Citybase's database. So basically what he's doing, and he's actually, we're one of, I think, thirteen clients that he's working, working for in the state of Texas. He gets and builds this huge database that he sends on a monthly basis. We're able to go in and basically using Excel and some filter, uh, filter features, we can go in, and as I can say, I just want to see oil and gas category for this month. And then you can start seeing, and you can pick what's a return versus an audit, because that is part, the confidentiality reports will have it showing up as a return or an audit adjustment. So I can look, you know, we can look at each individual category and say for, say fiscal year fifteen, and we've done that at least for, I think, the current year, I don't know that we've gone back anymore, but taking all of these eight hundred and eleven thousand dollars, and we know how much was actual current collections and how much was audit adjustments.
But looking at this, I couldn't determine that maybe it really was two hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars in May of fiscal year twenty fifteen, sixteen, and there was an audit adjustment of two hundred thousand dollars, so this number here is just the sixty-four thousand.
I don't believe there is, but I'll certainly go back and double check. I know what you're saying, but they're all going to be reported net, though, if that.
There's a good possibility you might be right, there's a possibility to go back to the fifteen, there might have been audited. But, but the overall scheme, over those four years, they didn't have much of an audit, because what we resulted now, what we experienced now in twenty seventeen, all those three, four years back, they're going back and doing some heavy-duty auditing and penalizing the seventeen numbers now, or those numbers. So is there a possibility there's one or two in there? Yes. But I think the overall scheme itself for those forty-five years, they just collecting, collecting, paying, paying, and now they got the, when it started going down, said, hey, we need to go check back. Some of these companies are not really maybe paying they should pay back then, so we're getting a hit with all those audits right now, and that's why Andrew's mentioned, this past few months, there were six, seven, eight audits entries, I just on seventeen, that actually, if it wasn't for that, we'd be in good shape, I think about nine hundred seven thousand dollars. But I'm not, you know, ignoring your comment, but the likelihood of that happening as the overall in the four year, you know, it's not going to offset much, because I think in my opinion, that in those four years, they're just sending, tracking money because the dollar is so big. Once the industry went down, usually they go back and check and say, okay, what they should have done, and then we're getting hit for that now.
Right, the company's asking for the audit and saying, we overpaid. But I'm just trying to make sense of, does, did it really fall last year, or you know, was it really a drop, or was it someone getting back sales tax that they overstated? It doesn't matter.
And Andrew, can you, and going forward too, it's a good question. If you see an anomaly that you believe is caused by an audit, would you asterisk that and note that when you do your report? And that way going forward, we'll know whether that's.
Yeah, we'll need to.
That's created.
Certainly, we wouldn't just need to find a good spot to interject that.
Yeah, just, I mean, just if you notice that.
All the ones so far, just for.
Priorities, that moving forward, we wanted to do that, because we want to have a clean base itself to move forward, because we can go back two, three years, okay, I'm not really accomplishing, I want to know what I'm doing now, what's happening now, and move forward with that.
Yeah, because that way your figures are more accurate for your forecasting.
Yes.
Wouldn't it be true, not to belabor the point, but there's fewer individual companies in this category as compared to retail, there's probably audit adjustments in everything, they just don't net out to be a negative number, wouldn't that probably be true?
Well, I think the size of the audits adjustments are.
Yeah, in this particular, there might be thirty-two companies or twelve in this, where the retail, how many are there? Anyway.
No, I think there's actually more, and the way we have this oil and gas, again, I, I hit on it, but I want to make sure and emphasize it here, is that this is true oil and gas plus all those businesses that are really tied to, you know, service companies that service the oil and gas. And also, yeah, the, the pipeline transportations, the, anything that we felt was truly going to really spike up and down with the oil and gas, and really the, the hope was to kind of isolate some of that spiking and dipping in this oil and gas sector. So yeah, there's, there's certainly more, I'd have to, I'm not even going to guess at the numbers, out of the thirty-five hundred, there's, there's certainly more than thirty, you know, there. It's a pretty good, I mean, the data itself is a lot to try to manipulate, and that's where, you know, without Excel, it'd probably be impossible, but I think the, the only other point I want to point out is that, back to Mr. Bocknight's comment, is that I think any of the audit adjustments, probably May of sixteen and prior, they're probably more on the positive side. I think the huge negatives are just the ones we're experiencing here as of late, and exactly what Gilbert was mentioning, they're, they're essentially catching up, so. Okay, without going through the rest of the categories, you know, again, we just kind of want to hit some of the high points, the, the final piece of the report is really, it's called a rolling twelve months, so I, I want to take a chance to hopefully explain this and not confuse the matter too much, so I'm gonna just pick, this is the state of Texas rolling twelve month, and I'm gonna blow this up so that hopefully everybody can see it. So without looking at the actual information on here, you know, somebody may say, well, what is an actual rolling twelve month? What, how does that even calculate it? I, I can't, there's no way to calculate the percentage that's shown on here by looking at the data that's on the screen, so. This is a report taken directly from the Citybase reports that we get monthly, and I didn't mention that we, we have and have been getting now, I think we're, I think it was about January of last year, we started the pilot with him, we, we physically started a, a paid agreement with him starting in October. We get, I think either six or seven different variations of report from him monthly. Bits and pieces of those go to build this more executive level report, so what we've done is literally snipped reports or pages of reports and pasted it into this one here, so. In order to calculate, this is showing, and I have the state of Texas report here, and it's saying that the current R twelve percent is a two point two six percent. The way that is calculated, if you take the current month plus the eleven months prior to that, so we've got the current twelve months versus a year ago, twelve months, so essentially, let's see, I had to write it down, because I knew I was going to forget. I'm gonna, I'm gonna have to, I don't have that page in front of me, but if you say July of sixteen through June of twenty seventeen, so that's our current twelve, versus that same timeframe a year ago, the delta between those will determine a percentage, so it's two point two six, so every month a new data point is plotted on the map, so hopefully that's, you know, pretty straightforward. Maybe not pretty straightforward, but hopefully that explains how the data points are built. And then there's three lines, and the optimal point is to be within, this is the midpoint optimal operating, and this is the high and the low, so you just really want to be, if you're within those three bars, or essentially three lines, it's considered normal. If it goes up, it's a peak, if it's below, it's a, it's a kind of a technical recession. Does that kind of sets the stage for the rolling twelve? Yes, and this is really, you know, this is, the rolling twelves will really kind of smooth out a lot of the individual months, and it essentially predicts when things have either peaked or bottomed out. So, and this is, I can't wait to almost point out the cities, but this shows an also twenty-five-year historical of that rolling twelve.
It goes back to the point you were talking about, when you receive sales tax, there's a lag of time. This kind of shows you a trend ahead of time, what you can expect moving forward. Because what you hit on there, Mr. Bocknight, earlier, the timing, it is, it is a key point of this analysis, sorry.
Okay, so I wanted to show kind of one of the reports and, and how this is derived first, before I jump back to, again, kind of the table of contents and summarizing the information. What we show here, there's six different R twelve, so we try to take it from the highest level available, which will be at the state of Texas level. We then go to the TML, Texas Municipal League, Region eleven, which the city is within, the biggest component of the TML region is Corpus Christi, so that's going to, kind of taking it from the state down to the TML, to the city of Victoria. Okay, then we show three comparables, the county of Victoria, or maybe not comparables, but at least three local entities, so County of Victoria, City of Cuero, and City of Port Lavaca. And without going to each individual chart, we can look at those. You're able to determine, so from the state of Texas, it looks like the declining trend really bottomed out around September twenty sixteen. Same with the TML region, and then it's important, and I'll just go ahead and jump to state of Texas, and the reason I think it's important to show is that you can see as it's coming down, as it's coming down, well, this, it kind of gets bunched up there, but you can see that, okay, it kind of bottomed out there, and if you draw a line, you can kind of see we were able to extrapolate, that's around September of twenty sixteen, and it's been on an upward trend at least since then, so it may drop a tad and come back up, but at least that's a positive sign moving forward. From the TML region, kind of follows the same suit, it's actually a negative one point five three percent, but it's been moving upward. And I'm just very excited to change the verbiage on the city of Victoria's chart. And we feel like last month it actually bottomed out and is now taking a tick up.
We haven't seen one of those in a long time.
Not going to bet, but I'm hoping that's going to sustain itself moving forward. The next chart is the county of Victoria and.
Gilbert's chart?
Probably not obvious, but they would, you know, most likely trend very close to us, again, it looks like they bottomed out last month. And then it's also nice to see that at least a couple of our local entities, Cuero has, looks like they probably bottomed out same time as the actual state itself, and has been on an upward trend. And Port Lavaca, finally, same thing, they're on kind of an upward trend. So that essentially covers everything in the report. Be glad to entertain any additional questions. Yes, this information was just updated this morning, it's on the city's website. And I, what I realized as I was looking at the council packet earlier, the link that's on there probably won't take you to the current month, so want to point out just for even maybe the viewing public, on our financial transparency page, we've modified it a tad. So the monthly information we've been sending out will still stay in the city and VSTDC links, that'll just be the, the graph showing the, the month. The sales tax revenue report is the June and will always be the most current report. And then we're going to archive, at least for now, several months of that, so it'll go to a separate page, so now we have May and then the April, which was kind of the initial version of that report, and then we went ahead and left that twenty fourteen report, because we actually still refer to that here and there. So I'll be glad to entertain any questions, or certainly as you dig into the report, if you find other little, I know after the sales tax meeting, when we kind of debuted this to them as they had funded it, uh, there was a lot of good conversation and feedback, and we've incorporated that into this version, uh, as you see it today, but certainly open to, you know, any other modifications to make this a, a more usable product.
One comment, doesn't seem to be any questions, is I, I'm always thankful people enjoy numbers as much as Andrew and Gilbert do, as you can tell by this report. But it does help us when we start doing budgets, and I, you know, I know Gilbert has said it, he's relooked at some of our numbers going forward that we'll present to you next week, so, uh, the data is, it's always good to have good data, and that's exactly what this report does. It's a lot of work, but I, it's very beneficial to us, uh, doing those predictions, so, um, Andrew, I'm thankful you enjoy numbers.
I probably, I probably dream about this tonight, so I don't know if that's a good or a bad thing.
Despite it may appear, you know, uh, the sales tax dropping, I think we're in sound financial shape. And the, the trend has turned somewhat. I would say that, you know, in the past years, we did reap some extra, and we were, you guys did a good job of guiding us as a council and holding some of it back and increasing our general fund ending balance, we did the right thing. Some communities did not do that, we don't want to talk about that, though, uh, but I know it just will make the budget, as you said, the budgeting session a little, little more challenging, but we're in good shape.
Absolutely.
Okay.
But you know, we also continue to get interest from retailers out wanting, looking at Victoria, so when you look at these numbers and how much that large percent that we count on that retail, it just proves that we are a regional market, and that market is still holding strong, so.
I thought of one more comment, and just based off of what you just mentioned, on the retail side, and I need to probably quit looking at the data that's available to us, but, and it may just kind of help if nothing else with the online sales conversation, but looking at the May retail number, it was seven hundred and eighty-seven thousand. If you take, and I, no particular, I don't have stock in any of these companies particularly, but with retail, if you take Walmart, HEB, Lowe's, Home Depot, Sam's Club, Academy, and Target, so these are all big box retail stores here. That makes up, can't even read my own writing, three hundred and thirty-seven thousand, I believe, which is about forty-three percent of that total retail number. So the nice thing is to see that the large payers in almost every category don't look like they're going anywhere, hopefully.
Just a reminder, work session next Wednesday, uh, next Monday, the twenty-sixth at five o'clock, we'll also meet again on Tuesday at five o'clock, so. And then the Ju, our July fourth meeting will actually be July fifth.
Very good, okay, thank you, we're adjourned.
Yes.